Hello, Chums, welcome to Night City Council. Council is in session. I am John John the Wise, and I am here with the illustrious mayor of Balance Town himself, James Hutt. Hello, James.
Hello, hello.
And we have a Yes, we have a very special guest with us today, Melissa Wong from Artel Sorin Games. Welcome, Melissa. Good to have you here.
Good evening.
Is one of our fantastic outside writer contributors to Cyberpunk Red. We're super happy with what she's been doing. Remember the 20, if anyone remembers from the Reddit, the 20 Things list, that's, that's all her.
Yeah.
Beautiful stuff and, you know, happy to have you on, of course.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you tell us about yourself, Melissa? Tell us how you got started at Artel Sorin, Tabletop Gaming, whatever you can.
Well, Tabletop Gaming is a long story. I got bitten by the magic bug when I was 13 and I started getting into gang culture and then from there on, I started playing D and D when I was 15, Vampire when I was like 17, and I've just been a gamer ever since. And when I was 13, it was a long time ago, and 40. So, um, I was participating in a Cyberpunk Red campaign with a couple of my housemates. Um, if you, if you, if you read role-playing games, they are Jennifer Bowman and Mark Carroll. They are also RPG writers. And Mark was running the campaign. I was playing a former Explosive Oneness disposal tech named Boots and, um, because I tend to get deep dive into a lot of white world building, um, I just started writing 20 Things lists for free, for fun, on Reddit. And, um, basically, my pointsmen started reading my posts and I got a private message from Artel saying, "We'd love to buy your writing, but you gotta take it off Reddit." So, um, I sold my writing to them and then they approached me for an adventure of Tales of Red. And that became two adventures when they needed someone to fill in an adventure that was unusable. So that's how I became a freelancer. Before then, I did work for hire writing for, um, other, other companies like for the current modifius Star Trek. I was a uncredited writer for the Beta Quadrant. The infamous illustration of the Klingons and Endorians playing hockey, that was my prompt. Um, I also did stuff for Fantasy AG with the Lair's book that Mark Carroll is credited on. I helped him conceptualize his adventure with the Night Market. Which was a different Night Market from the Artel Mac Market.
So you've been writing for a while, whether it was like as a hobby or professionally?
Yeah, I have. But, um, Cyberpunk is really the, the only stuff that I've had like credited to my own name fully and 100% my own writing.
That's cool. That must be really exciting to be playing a game that you really like and then the people that are behind the game are like, "We gotta have you on board."
I, I think it helps that I have a very, um, different international perspective from writers in the US. I grew up in Singapore. So I do have a sort of really good understanding of the kind of like multicultural soup that, um, Night City is supposed to be. And I think that's why I was asked to write adventures because of very, very good grasp of what like a really like cradle culture can be.
Very cool. Yeah, I like all of your 20 things. I was there on Reddit when you posted them and I was excited to see them all. And I, I thought it was a no-brainer to get you on board to write more for.
There's also like a couple of short, like essays. There's one that's actually, um, Love and Dating in Cyberpunk Red where I try, I teased out basically why you get hit with like 76, you know, um, humanity loss for Mr. Stud. Um, the long story short is the kind of sex it allows you to have is like the kind of action you see in, say, Marvel movies, you know? Unless you're really heavily cybered up, you're not gonna be grabbing a helicopter and preventing it from taking off. Similarly, the kinds of things you can do with an implant are probably not within the realms of human possibility.
That's, that's pretty scary, huh, James? That kind of Mr. Stud?
Yeah, well, personally, uh, it's the realm of homebrew that, uh, the only thing that we know about Mr. Stud is its tagline at Artel. We, we don't know anything about what it says. So all of that is, that, that's all you. That's
Yep.
What a wild imagination you have.
That's actually one of the things I like to do to players. And, um, when I write, um, I do fanfiction and I'm working on some original fiction for fun. But, um, one of the things I like to do is I let the, I imply and then I let people make it up. Because, yeah, a lot clever than I can be sometimes.
That's, that's great. That's one of the, the secrets to modular game design as well. Um, you wanna have enough description for people to be able to fill in the gaps on their own? Because, uh, the story they make up in their head is better than the one you put on the page anyways.
Um, that's also something I do when a GM, I, 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 none of my adventures actually scripted beyond a vague word web. And then I just drop rumors and then the, the players make up their minds and figure out, "I'm gonna chase this one because it seems the most likely" and then I just follow it. So it prevents me from writing encounters and then having them not do them.
Yeah, yeah. I think we've all been, we've all been burned in that.
But I didn't major in theater, so.
Yeah, there's a, um, I, I, I too have stopped writing, uh, like direct, unless it's going to be like, "Hey, I'm planning this for a convention setting where there needs to be a step-by-step move forward because I have to hit a two-hour time limit and I gotta hit time." Unless it's that, um, I'm building, "Wouldn't this be a cool scene?" And it has flexible inputs and outputs.
Yep.
Uh, and then when they get into a point where they need that cool scene, I will pull from a list of, um, like a stack of flexible, more modular encounters and then plug in the different characters into it.
Pretty much. I love this approach because, um, players are very hard to hurt. They're harder than cats.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. It's tough to guess what they will ever do. And if you try to guess too much, you end up, uh, taking away a little of their player agency, even if you were trying not to. Yeah, even when you're trying not to, you know?
Yeah, which is, which is why I kind of just go whole hog on improvisation because they're a lot cleverer than I. They'll, they'll make perfect enemies that will suit them perfectly. You know, they just, I just present them with the, the right mix of NPCs and they'll go ham, you know, they go whole hog on it and it's fun.
Yeah, I always feel like I shine better when I'm not looking at any notes other than like a quick bullet point. Because then I can react with the moment. But if I'm, I've been there where I'm like flipping through papers and it's like I'm taking up game time trying to figure out a small little detail, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sometimes it's best to call whatever you're doing, uh, like a DV14 check and then move on.
Like that's the spirit. I wrote the 20 Things lists in to, to give people like a whole list of things they could pull from. So you got the table, you gotta chuck the dice and go, "Okay, so this is the direction I'm going."
Yeah, totally. Actually, I was gonna ask you, I was gonna ask you, Melissa, and James as well. Uh, I'm curious, how do you guys use the tables like that, charts like that? Do you guys do it pre-game, mid-game, or, or what's it like?
I do it mid-game. Um, usually I don't even use them. The lists are just like a random list of my thoughts organized and what happens is, um, I don't actually throw the dice. I pick the one that suits the situation. So it's up to the players. But, um, for other people who don't, you know, play the way I am, you know, it's improvisational, it's narrativistic. Um, the, the dice roll at least lets them, um, throw some randomization in there. And even if they don't use the tables as intended during the game, they can use them during prep and read through them and go, "These are great world-building options. These have little story tags hidden in them that I can use as plot hooks." Like even a weird one with 20, uh, 20 things you can find in that guy's dermal pocket, you know? Um, I put a whole bunch of tiny little plot McGuffins that they could follow. There's hints of a serial killer, of like a biotechnica, um, you know, bee colony, um, you know, so e- even if it isn't like just a tiny little thing that like, okay, your, your PCs kill some chum then, you know, they need to look through his pockets, what do they find? You can still weave a plot out of that. And that's kind of the direction I write them from.
So how I use them is I love using them for inspiration. Um, and I also find that they shine as a actual random table. Um, but the place I, the only place I use that random table for that random purpose, um, is when I play with my little brother. Um, because I do play a two-player campaign, me as one of the players and my little brother is the other player. And then me as the GM with my little brother. Um, with the idea, a low, really low-player duet game can benefit from a lot of randomization because it takes some of the stress off of, um, the less players you have in a D and D game, the more it becomes a different kind of, there's less cat herding, but there's more screen time and it can very quickly feel like, um, all it takes is for one half of the people in the room to get tired for the other half to be doing a one-man play. Uh, performing a one-man play for hours. Um, I'm back.
There we go.
Yay.
S- sorry about that, Chums. We had technical difficulties, but you don't know because I edited all that out. Anyway, James, who are saying?
My alarm went off.
Ah.
My alarm, "Don't miss, don't miss shooting this," went off. I always start it early.
Well, at least you didn't, you know, nag on your alarm.
See, there you go. Um, anyway, uh, where was I? Probably doesn't matter.
You're talking about, uh, you're playing with your, your brother. You play with your brother, you do one-on-one and you use the tables to help with improvisation.
Yeah, it helps alleviate, uh, the like always-on nature of a, of a, uh, of a duet game.
Yeah, I think that, uh, that resonates with me a lot, the inspiration part of it. I like to, if I don't have an idea of like how I want an NPC to behave, there's like dozens of charts on Reddit for D and D and even other games that can just give you NPC attitudes, you know what I mean? Like, uh, one, one I found was at a checkpoint, I was like, "I want this NPC at the checkpoint to be interesting, but I just don't know what I want them to do." I found one that said that they want them to, the players to fill out a bunch of paperwork. And I said, "Oh, that's great." Like they're bothering them with, "Do you have the I-98? Do you have the F-34? Do you have foodstuffs?" And I ended up barely using it in my game, but it added like a little bit of flavor that made it really fun.
I'm actually thinking of ending the 20 Things lists to, um, genres and settings outside Cyberpunk Red.
Yeah, definitely a cool idea and, uh, I, I, I definitely like them. So, um, I figure while we, while we have you here, um, we got some questions in the community, right, John John?
Yeah, yeah, we have a bunch of questions.
Do we have any really good, like, um, open-ended ones in there? Uh, cause if it's just a rules question, then I, that's a, that's something that we can do any week, right?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a couple rules ones where they wanna know like, you know, what does this mean mechanically and stuff? But there is an actual kind of esoteric one from Adam Duffy here. Adam Duffy asks, um, I guess we're getting into the questions, by the way, so we're just gonna.
I just, you know, I wanted to help.
Yeah, yeah.
Move that out. You don't need to signpost it like that.
Yeah, yeah. We're gonna, so here it is, uh, from Adam Duffy. "How powerful are linear frames cinematically? Can you lift doors right off the hinges? Pick up a car? Do they have option slots for mods? And do they count as cyberware to mitigate fall damage?" So a little bit of mechanics there, but it's the idea of like, what's it supposed to look like if somebody has a linear frame? How does it translate in your game?
Okay.
You go first, sorry.
So, so let me handle all the games separately quick. Um, it does not give you the benefit of cyber legs for, for fall damage. Um, because that's hydraulic legs. That's what those are for. I don't want them to, you know, replace the, one of the only benefits of having cyber legs. Um, so far. Um, and, um, in terms of can you lift a car? Yeah, you can probably lift a car with a body greater than 10. Um, will still be a check probably, a little bit, but it becomes possible. You know what I mean? Um, you can move immobile cover, I believe. You can move, um, solid cover and that would be a car. So, um, that's, that's that. Uh, and, uh, mechanically, other than that, it's, uh, it's giving you that body bonus, which is doing a lot.
There you go. Melissa?
So I focus largely on visuals and world building and in my head, it looks like, have you watched Elysium, the movie? That thing that Damon has on?
Yeah.
That's what I imagine the, uh, the linear frame looks like. You can probably get something sleeker and implanted inside you. But like the worn ones with, that you interface, interface through neck plug, that's what it actually kind of reminds me of.
Yeah, that's, uh, they have some great sci-fi designs in that movie.
Yep, yep. Um, like Elysium wasn't that awesome a movie in some ways, but visually it was pretty damn good. And that's why, uh, you know, um, New Blonde Camp tends to do a lot of visual toy force.
Solid B-movie, in my opinion. Yeah. Yeah, in my games, um, when, first, the thing about linear frames, I always treat it like kind of in a realistic sense where it's like, well, how would I feel if I'm sitting at a bar and some dude walks in and he's got a linear frame? Everybody's eyes are on this person. Everybody. So if you're trying to be inconspicuous, if you're trying to be stealthy, all those things go out the window when you look like a big old Iron Man walking through the door, you know? And like Melissa said, maybe you got the Eddies and you can get these like really slick ones that go under your skin, but people still think that there's something kind of different about you because your muscles look bigger than anybody in the room, right? So that's how I would treat it cinematically. I'm not telling my players they can't have it, you know, I would never do that. But I would tell them like, "You gotta keep in mind that when your linear frame is on, you're gonna get unwanted attention, whether you like it or not."
It's true. It definitely makes you stand out for better or worse.
For an internal version, uh, if you've ever played Deus Ex: Human Revolution and, uh, Mankind Divided, I like to think that, um, the bits of medics that are showing through Adam Jensen's skin, um, in his chest, especially in the concept art, that's what an implanted linear frame looks like.
So we have a, um, we have, I believe, one image right now of an implanted linear frame in, uh, in Witcher's garage, because he has an implanted linear frame. But I do agree, it is a lot like, um, Adam Jensen and the implanted, uh, nature of it.
There's so much stunning visual concept work that they did for the Deus Ex, um, Human Revolution and Mankind Divided games that I'd like to rip them off for Cyberpunk.
Oh, yeah, you have to.
Way, way down, medics work completely different. They don't have humanity. It's, it's all about your, you know, neuroprazine, your, um, how your glial, um, scarring handles it, but visually it's like yoink, yoink, yoink.
Yeah, they're, they really nailed the cyberpunk visual and aesthetic in, uh, in those games.
And the, the nice thing in like, um, I, I come from this as a, you know, costume design person, is the, uh, really clever things they did with fashion in, um, you know, Human Revolution, they actually did a new, um, Elise Beethan style. And then in, um, Mankind Divided, they went to a more medieval look.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, they took some really interesting, you know, um, directions for like what feudal corporate gear might look like by, you know, evoking the buckling on a, uh, Akaton or a Gambeson in, um, in a suit jacket. I was like, "Oh, that's clever. That's clever." If you paint it in the ass to sew and therefore never actually make it into factory production, but that's clever.
Yeah, I mean, with Cyberpunk too, the, our game, our Cyberpunk, you, we always have to remember style over substance as well. So even though you got a linear frame, it's got like a Hello Kitty on it. Or, you know, or all kinds of craziness.
Yeah, that's gonna be my next character. Danger Gale operative with, um, with a linear frame that has Hello Kitty on it.
Yeah, it's a Sanrio linear frame.
Yep.
I, I like to think that in Cyberpunk, the idea that, um, there's a lot of, um, people wearing expensive tech, um, got, has, they have expensive tech under their skin, then they get killed and that expensive tech becomes someone else trying to sell you their expensive tech.
Yep, yep.
Uh, so I imagine that there are a lot of people that have just these cyber parts that are just somewhat slightly smaller or larger than they're supposed to be for their body. And, uh, that's gotta be like having a blood tattoo under your eye, you know what I mean? Like, um, I would be really worried about the guy with the Hello Cutie linear frame that's like bulging awkwardly out of his arm because it's not sized for the meat properly.
Yep, yep. Another thing I love, we're like, sorry.
Like drifting, you know?
Yeah. Another thing I love to like juxtapose is like if you see, um, you know, a lot of people complain, "Well, for, why, why should these like, um, people at the food bank or these folks collecting, you know, their, their, um, snap cards, you know, um, why are they, why do they have smartphones?" And like you do first because a smartphone is not a convenience anymore. It's like a necessity, but like you'll see people whose shoes are wearing out and you've got airports and, and our time, our contemporary history is full of that juxtaposition of like, if you have like this one thing that you might have bought when you're flush, you're still gonna show it off even if your shoes are wearing out. And I feel like edge runners are kind of perfect juxtaposition of that. "I got this, you know, cyber arm. I got this linear frame when I was paid for a job. Now I'm back to hustling and my, you know, my jacket's all ready, but I got this chrome that says I once had it."
Yeah, you sleep on the streets, but you have a linear frame, you know, like those are the kinds of things. Yeah, I think. Yeah, the cyber pillow, yeah. Um, actually, I learned from our Discord that that was a 2020 thing that was brought back. That's interesting.
Those are things that go.
Yeah, the cyber pillow. I was gonna say, uh, I believe Mike called it techno-shock is what he labeled. I don't know if he came up with the term, but the idea is like technology's going so fast that it's going like past hu- what humanity, humanity can understand from it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you, there would be, um, for example, um, so that, that creates this, these people that like, um, don't, the, um, the neo-Luddite movement
Yep.
are also in that, uh, bit. Those are the people that are like, "I'm just gonna keep walking my office job. I don't need to know what new stuff is out there." Um, because it's going so fast that even if I kept up with it, I would have to be in the know constantly in order to.
We, we are seeing, um, bits of this in our time.
Yep.
Um, look at the typical, um, boomerang person and how internet illiterate they are. You know, they can use Facebook, but they don't know what things are scams.
Yeah, they're being left behind a little bit on that.
So I, 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 I got into computers in like 95, 96 and I'm still not as adept as like, you know, a kid who's like 20 who's had, just had a tablet his whole life.
Yeah, and imagine trying to explain to those boomers like what Dolly or Mid Journey is or what VRChat is, you know, like that's like a whole, like other planet.
Oh, I used, I used VRChat for the first time, um, like three days ago. That is, that is weird, man.
It's weird, huh?
Super weird. I, um, I was looking for tabletop role-playing game areas in it. And I discovered the shell of a Japanese tabletop role-playing game convention in VR.
Whoa.
Held a year ago. And I was there like, uh, showing up a year after everything closed, just looking at all the graphics they had put on the walls. And I was like, "I don't know any of these games."
Wow.
None of these games had an English translation at all. That's wild.
On the TwitchCon ball pit.
Oh, man.
It's still Cyberpunk.
Sounds frightening.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even wanna know what that is.
Ball pit that, um, had foam blocks in it, but was on top of a concrete floor and they did not put padding underneath.
Oh, jeez.
And he broke a spine in two places.
Oh, no. This was at this year's TwitchCon?
Yes.
Oh, Twitch.
So, uh, like my Cyberpunk sense started tingling when I started seeing the, the post about it. I was like, "Oh, boy, this is straight out of Cyberpunk."
Yeah, in Cyberpunk, they would take that person out in the back and, you know, flatline them so they wouldn't have to pay for the loss.
I don't know. I think in Cyberpunk, that might've been an intentional hit on that person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, then this is just the cover-up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, man. Well, uh, I hope that answered your question, Adam Duffy.
Yeah. Sorry about that, Adam Duffy.
Um, okay, um, the next one, I think we can answer that isn't complete. Oh, you know what? Yeah, there's a couple here. Let's do Reputation. This is from Enrico Zimol. "How do you gain and lose reputation? Can the players do anything to change their reputation anonymously?" I had two very interesting questions. James, um, why don't you tell the people from the mechanical aspect what reputation's all about?
The reputation exists to model the idea that if you did a really big thing, people should know about it. Um, it's a, it's a mechanic for, you know, it wouldn't make any sense if you just robbed a bank, if there was a TV story about it and you don't have a reputation the next time you walk into a bar. That wouldn't make any sense. Uh, it's there to model the like, "Oh, I know that guy. I don't know that guy." Um, and it allows doing a big thing to have a important mechanical effect in face downs. Um, if you've robbed a bank and you go for your gun sort of and look at the other guy, there'd be like, "That guy robbed a bank. I think they mean it." Um, anyway, uh, it interacts with face downs. It exists to fill the narrative hole of, "Why don't they know who I am?" Because you can roll, whenever you meet someone new, you roll under their reputation. And if you roll under their reputation, you know the person. Um, it, it fills that like, um, um, what can be a hole of a GM potentially um, without it going, "Oh, they don't know who you are." And meanwhile, you've been playing the campaign for half of the year and anyone who plays a campaign for the year will blow up some oil rig at some part.
Uh, yeah.
You do not remain with a low reputation for very long. And how you get a reputation, it's simple. You just do something. Anything.
Yep.
Um.
Melissa?
So, um, this is not really spoiler-y because I'm gonna be so vague, but in my adventure for Tales of Red, um, Haven't Got Stitches to Wear, you can make the Chicken Lady cry. You really can. If you make the Chicken Lady cry, you get a reputation for being, um, you know, the kind of dirty dealer who made the Chicken Lady cry. That means that the Chicken Lady may not be so, uh, happy to deal with you, but that's not just issue. She's popular because she sells chickens, um, real electric light ones. I, I can't really say whether she got them legitimately from Biotechnica. So, you know, if you don't want a bunch of boons coming after you, maybe you wanna keep the chicken on the down low, but she has contacts who are also merchants and if you make her upset, then you have the reputation across the Chicken Lady, then you're going to have to deal with the fact that some of the fixes will go. "I, you know, I'm not gonna give you credit on that, sir. You know, you're gonna have to do it all over the Eddies because, um, you can't be trusted." You say you're gonna do X and you did Y. As for what you can gain it, oh, sorry.
The good news is all you have to do after that is just rob a bank and then you're "I robbed the bank, not as the guy who made the Chicken Lady cry." It is temporary curse upon your reputation for sure, but.
And I was gonna say, you probably can't do this anonymously. If you do something anonymously, you're not gonna get the benefit of what you did to change that reputation.
And unless you try to go sell stuff that you obviously got from that, you know what I mean? You can't get away with it completely anonymously, just complete black op and get a reputation for doing that. Um, and, and rightfully so. If you went in like ghosts, you went out like ghosts, they don't know you were ever there. So of course.
That's why as good as one of my NPCs is, you have to make like actual, an actual skill roll to have heard of him because he's, he's so professional and discreet. He doesn't have much of a reputation.
Yeah.
He's just a kooky guy who plays elf lines.
I love those kooky guys that play elf lines.
That is, um, that is another part I did, I've not, um, you also did a list for elf lines. I did not mention it earlier. You gotta check out the elf lines, uh, 20 people you might find in elf lines online, right?
10. I did 10, uh, characters and 10 players.
10 characters, 10 players. That's right.
Yeah, uh, I believe it was in the second DLC for Elf Lines?
Yep.
Finds the one with the, and the one with the, uh, what is it? Uh, the one that has the character sheets in it.
Which, by the way, Chums is free on the website.
DLC is free on our website. So if you wanna get a taste of, uh, one of Melissa's 20 Things list, albeit this time split up into 10 and 10. Um, you, uh, you can do that without paying a dime and then you can buy, you know, um, Tales of Red. You can buy Tales of Red.
Yeah.
That's why most of my work is.
There you go. Data pack also.
Yeah, interface, right? The data pack.
No, no, no. Act is different than interface.
Oh, yeah, right. My bad. Don't listen to me. Yeah.
I also sometimes write lists that, um, I. Pass on to various our tail staffers and if they clear it for publication free, I, I posted to Reddit.
Oh, very cool.
That's like, that's one that's, um, twenty songs you may have heard in Night City and because that's so specific and not really. Campaign useful, um, I just put it up for fun.
That's very cool. We appreciate that in the community. Um, as far as reputation goes. I did wanna add a little bit of insight from my end. I usually. Give up to four reputation. This is zero to four to my players at starting characters. And the reason I do that is because it's not like any other stat where. You're giving them some kind of crazy advantage. Actually. If they have a reputation of a four, that could be to their detriment a lot of times as well. So I get with my players and I say, all right, you're making a fixer. How well known do you want your fixer to be? Do you want him to be really well known? That's gotta be a four. If you want him like almost there, three, two. If you're new to the area, I have my own homebrew area. So I'm like, hey, are you new to Texas? Have you ever been to the Devil's Triangle? No? Okay, you're at a reputation zero. Did you do maybe a little bit of work for this mercenary group? Yeah, I did a little bit. Okay, you're a one. Your reputation one here. You know, so it's kind of like a fluid stat that I give them and then throughout the campaign, they gain reputation. From all the shenanigans that they go through and that's basically how I gauge whether people recognize them when they walk in the room. Now, I never, I don't specifically tell them like that guy recognizes you. I just roll and I'm like, uh-oh. Somebody saw them from across the room and recognized them and is probably whispering to his buddies like, hey, is that the ghost of the oasis over there? So that it helps me like add a little obstacle to, to our game.
The final thing the reputation is for, and I just wanna make sure we mention it. Is reputation is also a, um, you can get a reputation for cowardice. Um, which is of course the downside of running away. In a system where running away is actually rather easy. Um, you can get a fight that you are losing. Um, the move stat is very, very good at keeping your character alive, that Joe Star secret technique. Um. If you, if you get skate feet, you characters basically unkillable by any. Except for a very, very prepared GM. Um, maybe you could do it twice. It, it's good for two complete fight evasions. Um, unless they put you on some sort of oil rig or space plane, you are, you are getting away from that fight.
Unless they have skate feet too.
Oh, my God, no, you, you've got a nomad with skate feet. You are never getting killed. You cannot die. Um, but that type of thing will give you a reputation as a, you know, person who runs away from fights. And if that, if you run away from the important story fight, right? Like an important fight against somebody who else is well known, then you will get a reputation for running away from. Aren't you the guy that ran away from a fight with this guy? Then, then you can't face down. Uh, then you can't really use, you get a massive negative penalty to face downs. That basically stops you from being able to actually threaten violence.
Yeah, yeah, famous and infamous are just two letters away.
Why, why don't I just run away is that that is the reason that you might not want to. However, could almost still do. Uh, and, uh, you know, maybe it's better to keep your character alive. And all you have to do again is to rob one bank and you're back. That was all in the past. Didn't you run away for that? Yeah, but then I robbed this bank. There you go.
I ran all the way to the bank.
Exactly, exactly.
It's, it's like the, uh, chemistry book ignition, you know, test engineers need a good pair of running shoes. Edge runners, let's get beat.
That's great. All right, Enrico, I hope that answered your question about reputation. It is one of those things that, um. That i- i- is not maybe, it's very open ended, but that's on purpose because. It's hard to pinpoint exactly what you would do to gain and lose reputation. It's just kind of like a thing that you guys have to agree on.
And it, and again, it models like four different world. Things that happen in the world. So it makes sense that you're confused. Don't feel bad. Reread the section you got listening.
Yeah, and remember it's meant to be cool. Face downs are meant to be cool. It's like the whole, like you're looking at them, they're looking at you. You're facing each other and who's gonna win the stare down, you know? So, so rule of cool, I would always say. All right, let's go to another question here. This is from Panfei. Advice for homebrewing martial arts.
Ooh.
Yeah, it's a big one. It's a, it's a short question, but it's a big question.
I mean, I, I, I wrote the martial arts system. I should probably start.
Of course.
Um, so. My advice is to, one, um. Focus on a martial art that's focused on martial arts. Um. You know, work on, um, work with something that's a, uh. That's a, like established. Uh, martial art. Um, instead of coming up with your own and then look at what that martial art is known for. Uh, both in media. Uh, and in real life. Uh, and, uh, and then find. You know, find a special move for it from those ideas. Uh. And then, um, you know, find the other special move from. Oh, but they also do this, but make sure one of them is the most popular one and then do your deep cut one. Um, and then make it, uh, choose what kind of, um. Martial art you want it to be within the rules. What type of combat rules do you want it to interact with and in what way? Um, and make sure that, um. Like, when you put both the maneuvers together, they should have some sort of. Um, they should have a connective idea. Um, if the idea is like. Uh, targeted strikes or, um, lots of movement. Or I interact with grappling mechanics. Um, those are, those are some good areas. Um. That would be, that would be my. That would be my toolkit answer. Of, of how you might wanna think about doing that because it is homebrew and, um. You can, uh, you can get a long way with, with, I think that.
Yeah, so just to summarize, basically you're saying, take real world and media inspiration. And use the blueprints that are available in the book. Uh, uh, from the martial arts, you know, cause it's, it's, you pick a martial art, there's a special move, there's requirements to be able to do the special moves. Use that as a blueprint to come up with your own martial arts.
Use that as a blueprint, then rip off of it. Don't, don't just. If, if you're here to homebrew new martial arts, then do that.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm not a mechanic specialist. But let me use an example, um, you know, to go through the thought process that James has laid out. So say I want to emulate, um, Northern Praying Mentis martial arts. One of the things about it is that, um. It's big on redirecting initial hits by striking the inside forearm. And using your own thrusting force to spoil some of his punch, very much like Chi-Sao Sticky Hands you see in, um. Uh, Hongkar, um, Kung Fu. But also, um, after that, it's very big on fast follow-up strikes while the opponent is disoriented. So your two techniques, we want will be deflecting strike where you use a strike to, um, deflect. A blow and then a follow-up attack that would basically, um. You know. Attack a critical spot, um, because your opponent's blow has been spoiled. So that's a one-two, which is very much how. Um, Northern Praying Mentis works. And, um, it's visually a really striking style. So, uh, if you, you know, use the wonders of YouTube, you can actually find a lot of. Um, videos of especially, uh, Chinese and Hong Kong practitioners, um, sparring and training, which will also give you. A really good idea of how edge runners employing it are going to be using it, especially because. You know, these are guys of flesh and bone bodies and they're doing such really impressive things. Imagine what someone with cyber limbs could do with.
Very good. Yeah, I love that. That's great. That's great advice. Um, for me, you know, I grew up. With the movie Bloodsport, Jean-Claude Van Damme, Ninja Turtles. My son's name is Donatello. Uh, I grew up like MMA is one of my favorite sports, so martial arts is a big thing for me. Um, for what I have seen i- in real world application. Is martial arts is a combination of focusing on three factors and it's movement, striking and grappling. So some martial arts, you know, there's a Venn diagram where like two things they meet up. And then stuff like wrestling and jujitsu is mostly all grappling and stuff like kickboxing and karate is like all striking. And, and what, and what Melissa talked about is a lot about movement and striking.
Yep.
So, um, I would focus on those aspects, try to find a martial art. And, and focus on that. So like, let's say you pick jujitsu, you know, you're gonna be going into the realm of grappling. Uh, and maybe do a little bit of research, see what it is about jujitsu that makes it important. How it's used in a real world, uh, sense of like self-defense. Cause that's likely what you're gonna be using it for in your game. And then you can focus on building mechanics to better implement that kind of martial art. So I would focus on that, find a martial art like that. And as James and Melissa said, you know. You can take the, the, the applications from the book and make special moves and stuff like that to make it work. All right.
I think that's clear. I think that's a clean answer. I think we got that one.
Yeah, that's it. So, yeah, I mean, I love martial arts. I would love to see that kind of a source book in the future. Um, I would say for, if you want. You know, um, I don't know if it's happening. I don't know. Maybe it's happening behind the scenes. I hope it is. Um, I would say if you guys want some inspiration, the Pacific Rim source book for Cyberpunk twenty twenty. Has so much martial arts in it and I mean, us a lot, like. They went crazy with that. So you guys can see where they focused on it, maybe borrow some mechanics, you know. Whatever you want, you can get some inspiration from there.
I always, I always recommend that people read the Pacific Rim twenty twenty source book if they tell me. I wanna play an exec and I wanna work for Arasaka and you, you have to read that or you just cannot. You know, or you'll, you'll do all these things that. That half the fun of being an exec and working for Arasaka is having to deal with the idea that you're not. You're part of a satellite office and then the main office can do whatever they want and you will have to, you know. Very well.
Correct, Arasaka Edition.
Of America, I'll put it that way.
Yeah. There you go. Yeah, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but when, uh, Red. Red's lore came out and said Arasaka's banned from the US, all that meant to me was, oh, that they're just working secretly now.
Arasaka is banned. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. We're banned.
Oh, I guess they packed up and went home, right?
Uh, I, I, I for what we apologize and we leave.
Yeah, the, the thing that has affected is that you can't sell the dating sim in the US anymore. So. The Adam Smasher body pillows for the collector's edition have been showing up in the trash.
Ooh, see, yeah, I mean, that's just, you know, that's just capitalism, so.
I'm sorry, I'm cruel. I came up with the Arasaka dating sim with Adam Smasher's secret path on it and, and I. I've decided that if I'm going to give the listeners nightmares, it's, it's gonna be about like dating Adam, Adam in a, in a dating sim.
Hey, you know, maybe I'm into that kind of thing.
Tree, you know.
Big, strong hands.
Yeah.
Riding on the back of his bicycle to school.
Yeah, that's it.
All those, all those well-worn tropes.
Yeah, just a couple of buds, that's all. Uh, all right, how about, uh, this from Strained Love? Do you need the housing capacity upgrade to sleep in your car?
Uh, no, but if you sleep in your car, you're sleeping uncomfortably.
Yep. How would you implement that as, uh, as mechanics?
Sleeping in your car?
Uh, like sleeping uncomfortably, like fatigue or something like that.
And that's, that, I already did it. Find you the page number?
Yeah, yeah, uh, I, actually.
The section where you try to cram too many people in your connect.
Oh, man. Already did it, John John. I would think of. Oh, man, you, um, seen, what is it? Nomadland? That's a great movie that explains the thing. Nomadland is this, um. It's this great. Uh, just people living in their cars near LA and stuff and the type of life they have and all that good stuff. It's super important. For, uh, understanding the type of world Cyberpunk Red is, uh.
Yep.
Down. Um, so I believe it is. It is around here, um, sleeping uncomfortable. Here it is, um. Sleeping in a comfortable situation, page three seventy-seven. Sleeping in an uncomfortable situation will leave you fatigued the next day, which will penalize you an additional minus two. To everything you attempt while fatigued. This won't kill you, but it doesn't feel good either.
That's pretty hefty minus two. It's worse than a serious injury because serious injuries are only minus two to some stats.
Yeah, but think about it. If everybody's like, hey, let's all go sleep in the nomad's car. That way, none of us have to pay for our apartments and what are we gonna do with our rent money? We're all gonna go buy Malorians. What is the, what do you think that situation ends up with?
Yeah, a lot of, uh, tired edge runners.
A lot of runners and.
I'm gonna qualify this.
Finally buy a hotel room the night before the, the thing. I stopped knowing, hmm, I'm so glad we didn't spend money and got evicted this month. What are we all going to do? Suicide bombing. You know what I mean?
I'll qualify this. I am five-three, so I can sleep comfortably in some vehicles, like a Honda Fit is amazing. Because you can lay the front seats down as well as the back seats. I use that to transport loft bed, like an IKEA loft bed, flat tat in a Honda Fit. It's a tiny car, but even so. Even so stretched out comfortably like that, you have to consider you have zero insulation. You have no airflow unless you wanna leave the window cracked. You have no privacy whatsoever. Any freaking weirdo, and I work downtown in Austin, so I see a lot of them. Can stand there staring at you, tap on the glass. Imagine if you're parked in your vehicle somewhere in Night City and you're trying to snatch a few wings. You've got a blanket. But there's this gummy grinning toothless dude who's like staring at you and like going, hey, 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 hey. You got room for one more?
Ugh.
That's like going on like all night. Yeah, no, you're gonna be uncomfortable. Sorry.
You're not even safe sleeping in your apartment in Night City.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Window crack for airflow. I cannot describe like without changing the classification of this like. Interview, um, what might happen to you? At best, get a drink dumped on you, at worst. Worst things happen.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, just some van life videos. I, it is my prescription maybe. Um, just van life, man. That's, that's what being a nomad's all about. Hashtag van life.
But hey, you know, just get the, the, the proper upright and turn your, turn your combi into a tiny house. A real sleep in style.
True. Um, I, I think getting a, getting a sleeping. Situation, the, the fun, funny part about the nomad, uh, class is even if you get a sleeping combi as your, your, the first thing. Um, you can get another car, but you have to turn in your sleeping combi to, to get another one back. So you'd be like. Oh, maybe I'll crash on your couch. That's why it's the number, your apartment sleeps the amount plus one. That plus one factor, that's the couch surfing factor.
Hmm.
Um, anyway, I, I think that, uh, I think that answers it hopefully.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. So, yeah, you could definitely sleep in your car, but it's not gonna be a good time. Um, all right, this is from Raf. Um, I think we'll close off on this one. Advice on running advanced net runs with multiple black ice, net runners per floor and moocs and meat space. So this is, this is like beyond, this is like worst case scenario. You're getting shot at in real space, you're going into a net architecture, there's demons, there's black ice, there's two net runners. What's your advice on running some kind of scenario like that?
Uh, my advice is that's the, that sounds like the climax of the story. That shouldn't sound like a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Uh. The, uh, keep it to the climax of the story and, um, don't introduce all of these things same time. Start it one way and then ratchet it up. Oh, and then a security guard shows up. And then somebody else. And then somebody else logs on to the the network. And then somebody else logs on to the network. So close to being done, you know, um, and that'll that'll feel a lot more tense, uh, tense. Um, that'll or tense than, um, just doing all this stuff at once because they're already gonna Pathfinder and C fourteen floors, right? If they Pathfinder and C fourteen floors and they're like, okay, but there's no guards. I think we can do it. And they keep going, right? And the security guard shows up. Oh, ah, I guess that's the thing that the GM is gonna use to interact with us. The not net running characters. Hey, go do that, right? Somebody else logs on. Why aren't you done yet? Uh, there's a problem, you know? A turret spins up, somebody else logs on and now you're in full like. Boss music crisis mode. And then, you know, it happens, they get out and then we start going into epilogue territory. Um, where, you know, the thing that happens after something blows up in Cyberpunk happens, people try to escape the building. Um, you know, the thing that happens post-action sequence in almost all of these things. And, uh, I I think that would be, um. That would be my advice for that, uh. Super cool thing, uh, if you happen to have two net runners, it doesn't happen all the time, but if you have to have two net running player characters. Then you have to, you basically have to dedicate a lot more time to coming up with these situations. Um, so, uh, I I hope this person gets to experience a, uh, two net runner. Player character game, uh, in the future because they seem to maybe want to have a more net running heavy game. Additionally. Um, the other place that it, uh, really shines and this type of encounter would really make sense. Is if you have a very low, it's it's both sides of the spectrum, right? If you've got two net runners in a high, in a. Large amount of people in the party, then you need something to keep everybody busy. If you have one net runner in a two-player game and they happen. Um, then that's half your team is a net runner. Now you have to focus on it. Um, and if they happen to both be hardened, just, yeah, go for it.
Yeah, very good. Love that. Melissa?
Um, when I do this kind of thing, right, um, whether it's a one net runner or two, when I'm planning a very elaborate fight with multiple interruptions. I like to have a little list, um, I I I rough, I chart roughly. Um, when and in order should all these things happen, top to bottom. And then I draw, I I write percentages beside them, so objective, how many percent complete, introduce new, new, um, complicating element. And the, um, there's a movie that, uh, you know, I like to, I like to cite, uh, to show. Just how beautifully you can unfold that, uh. Christopher Nolan's Inception, so that, you know, it's a very post-Cyberpunk movie, but it's got some of the trademarks, you know, instead of like. The net, it's dreams and they're all, you know, in there together. But each of the la- layers, you've got someone leaving. To host the dream while everyone continues dreaming, so it's a slightly a reverse of the netrunner situation, but. You can see like in one layer, you know, a complication happens, which unfolds to the second layer, which unfolds to the third layer. And he has all these cascading, um. Complications, so, you know, firstly our dreams, I do get shot crap, you know, and then. You have to beat the clock of him bleeding out in that dream and also beat the clock of the other two dream. And to 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 get to the 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 next point in the heist. And and so Nolan actually has that super tight timeline and, um, I, you know, Inception's major, uh, inspiration for me, hence all the tailoring in my adventures. Uh, so I like to actually say, um, you know, I like to use the, how many percent of the heists? Should be, should they be done before I throw in the next monkey wrench? And then the party's having a hard day or a hard time, I, um, you know. Drop some of the petting encounters in the middle. And give them fewer encounters so they feel a little less pressed. If the players are stressed, if they're expressing frustration, causes the mom campaign. I give them a little less hurt, but if they're all like gung-ho and ready to go and like aggressive and chugging the energy drinks. I I keep it on tight, like, you know, five percent, ten percent, five percent, ten percent. You know, and I do not do it at regular intervals. I I I sometimes if they are like. In a punchy mood, I like give them fifteen percent free and they think, oh, it's gonna be smooth and then drop a a big threat on them. So going by like, you know, percentage of objective achieved and then dropping more surprises in pacing it that way can be really, really, um, helpful. So you're not juggling two, three things at one time and it also keeps the the pace of the heist going smoothly.
Very good. Brilliant. I love that.
Are really good for Cyberpunk.
Yeah, I agree. You had something you wanted to add, James?
Oh, no, I love it. Um, I had a shower of thought. You could have two net runners, net running in different neck architectures at the same time. Having to like one find the path or another one's net architecture. And then later in their architecture, maybe they could have been connected in their secret same network. I don't know. There's a bunch of really fun stuff you could do if you had more than one netrunner. Now I want to play a game with more than one netrunner. Haven't actually gotten to do it yet. Uh, I want to though.
You could have one netrunner, um, doing a a a net run to control access point for netrunner two. Like set in a situation where the, uh, defensive architecture for the setup to access the final node. Has to be net run first. So you run a run one running and netrunner two's life is in their hands, of course, if they mess up. The, you know, the lasers are gonna come up and chop them to a little bit, things like that.
Yeah, like Resident Evil. Yeah, I like that. Um, I would definitely say, uh, other than all those brilliant points. I would definitely say Raf, make sure that your net runner is well-equipped. There's all kinds of cool stuff like, uh. Deck Crash, I think is what it's called, where you can jack out a net runner unsafely. You basically jack them out. Um, that's something that they should definitely have on hand. Give them some way out or some way to control something that's going on then in the net architecture. So that the tables can be turned at any time, but it has to be like a risk reward kind of thing, you know, like maybe they can turn the net architecture. But at the same time, they're risking failing the entire thing. And all this danger that they put themselves in was for nothing. Uh, that kind of tension and obstacles that you throw in front of your players will definitely up the thrills. That goes on. I've definitely had net runners basically go like, you know what, I'm completely failing this thing. Let's just, who has a sledgehammer? You know what I mean? Let's let's take the hammer and break the thing instead of trying to finesse through it. So, uh, but but at the same time, it was still fun to watch them try to accomplish something like that.
Last bit I'll add in, um, Midnight with the Upload. Is a, uh, is the net running focus free DLC available on our Telltale Games website? In the download section, you should go check it out. It's free. That's how much it costs. Free. Um, and if you're asking this question, I hope you've read that DLC. Um, if not, get your player to read it.
And we covered it, so watch one of our previous episodes where we definitely covered it.
Watch another episode of the show too.
Yeah, there you go. All right, I think that we did the community a great service today. Uh, Melissa, I want to thank you so much for coming on. You're a brilliant writer. We're lucky to have you in our community, uh, at Artel Store and Games, writing these amazing. Adventures and lists and all the things that you you, uh, give us in this community. So I just want to thank you for being a part of it and thank you for coming on the show.
Of course, I'm glad to be here.
Yeah, you gotta come on again, okay, cuz. It's a lot of fun having you on.
Well, yeah, besides the fact that I'm scarring everyone's minds.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the fun part. We gotta scar them. If you're here for Cyberpunk, you're here to be scarred, okay?
You're here for the.
Yeah, exactly. So other than that, anything you guys wanna say? Is there anything you guys wanna plug? Melissa, do you have like a website you wanna plug or anything like that?
I do not yet. Um, I tend to actually remain slightly a low profile on the internet. But if you want to say hi, I'm always under our tell this card. Mind you, um, because I also work, um, two jobs, I'm currently working retail and, uh, at a suit shop and also, um. Over highest that you're at a theater, I don't actually have that much time to chat, so, um, I may not notice you're high unless you at me. I don't mind being pink.
There you go. Very nice. So Melissa says, talk to me. That sounds great. James, anything you want to add before we sign off?
I think we we covered a lot today. Um, thanks for listening to the whole episode and, uh, make sure to, you know. Send on your, send in your questions. Uh, we like those. Um, where can they send their questions in, John John?
Very easy, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. In the subject, put Night City Council and ask away. I'll be happy to add it to the list. We love answering questions here and we appreciate everybody turning them in. All right, with that, Night City Council is adjourned. We will see you guys next time for some more Cyberpunk goodness. Thank you so much. Bye.
All right, have a good time.
What's that?
Have a good time and good night.
Have a good time and good night. That's right. Bye, guys.